So this. Right. Amy, I am Linda Burnham. Is Linda here yet? I'll give her a call next year. Hi Linda, are you getting on? Okay. Come on, we're all on. Actually, we need you because. Exactly, yeah. Okay. What can they do on their side? I'll ask Jason, yeah. Alright. Okay, hold on. Thank you, okay bye. Jason? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Jason, she's trying to get on and she can't get on. Can we do anything on your side?
Uh. Let's see, what info is she trying to use, I guess?
You know, she's trying to join and it's not letting her join.
Maybe she can dial in?
Oh. I don't know. Would you like her number directly?
Well, the team support line, you know, we have a team support, but. I mean. See, who is?
Linda, Linda Burnham.
I just. I just emailed her dial in info.
But if she dials in, she won't have visual.
I don't know if we have any visuals planned for this meeting or not, but.
No, I mean, right now I'm looking at my screen and I can see Ben and I can see Amy. And I do both, I dial in and I also sign in on my computer, so I'm dealing with dual. Equipment. But it works.
I'll give her a call again. Hi, how are we doing? Then maybe, yeah. Alright, we'll hold a little longer. Thank you for, thank you. She's trying to get, she did get your email.
Okay, great. Michael, it looks like you're logged in twice, so we're getting some feedback. Is that Linda?
It is Linda.
Okay.
Okay, I'm here Ben.
Nice to have you because we really need you today.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just, I've tried all different ways, it doesn't seem to be connecting for some reason.
Are we ready? Right, meeting will come to order. Over with the minutes first. Get that out of the way. Just for August 2nd. Minutes. Motion.
Motion to approve the minutes, Commissioner Burke was.
Second.
Okay, discussion. I have one change, the number five. Okay, it says that Commissioner Rinaldi made a motion to approve the request for guaranteed fund. Commissioner Rinaldi also seconded the motion. Actually, the motion was made by Commissioner Burnham. Is Rochelle here?
Yes, I have that down, so I'll make that edit and get that posted for you guys.
Okay, any other changes besides that one I? All the changes? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Pose? Pass. Okay. Um.
Do we have a form? Or is?
We've got four, yes.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure.
Thank you. So this is legislature updates. That's, who's been, when? Julianne? Julianne?
Hello. Good morning.
Okay, I think you're on.
Hey, I. I'm not sure necessarily how you'd like to review these, I think, you know, big picture. This is the. Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe this is the first time coming since the legislation was passed. And so, all of the hard work, I really want to thank all of the commission members. Because we were able to get something across the finish line that was significant. And hopefully will provide a lot of clarity to the marketplace. That being said, I will reinforce that we are going to be. Creating, like, working on creating a communication plan in terms of how do we tell the industry? And, really, really, how do we tell the industry about these changes? To provide clarity, because one thing that we know certainly is not effective. Is sending out the legislation with brackets and underlines and saying, you guys figure it out. So, we've already started to get some questions in from CTR, from their members, which will, you know, we were answering on an ad hoc basis. But what we want to do is create both written communications, you know, through email. And, so can you just mute the people that are? I'm on mute. Thank you. So, you know, through email, through updates on our website, and then also, one of the things that we are doing in another industry that had significantly changed this last session. Is that we're going to be doing informational sessions. And, basically invite people, and now that we can do things in person. You know, at our building on Columbus Boulevard in Hartford, we have some larger conference rooms where we can have people come in and. Kind of listen to their concerns, address what, you know, is changing in the, has changed based on the legislation and. You know, just give people an opportunity to understand the regulatory structure, and we really anticipate too, that. We're going to get questions about some of the changes, we're also going to get questions about what the state of the world was even before these changes. Big picture, want to note that the bill does not go into effect until April 1st. And so, I'm sorry, April 1st, 2024. So, all of the things that we're talking about are coming, but not here yet, in order to. Excuse me. In order to make sure that we are not causing more alarm than help in the industry. Prior to April of 2024, we are going to wait until further in the year to start sending out these communications. Because we found that there's certainly a time where you can send them out too early, as well as you can send them out too late. So, but we certainly welcome the input of the commission as to what timing you think would also be best for that. And, in general, now it's kind of like, big picture what the state of the world is in terms of how we plan on talking about these, but. In terms of the legislation, we went through it a number of times, there, the only major change, from what we had looked at previously. As a whole group, is that the leasing agent now is authorized activity, but it is not a separate credential. So there won't be a license fee associated with that. Other than that, you know, like, Legislative Commissioners Office had some commas, they turned into semicolons and, you know. Maybe Shals versus Mays, but it, like, it was not, or not even, because that was substantively changed, like, really, the bill went through. Pretty unscathed, which is incredible. So I do want to have a big shout out to, not only the commission members, but also to Leslie, who helped shepherd this through over at the. Legislative Office Building and with the legislature and. Yeah, I am here to answer any questions about the statute and then. If there are none there, then we can kind of move on to the regs.
Have the regs been adopted by regulations review?
Oh no, you guys, so you're our first stop. So, the first stop in this process was to send them over to you, because before we even send them, so there's a, as you know, there's, there's a many-layered process to getting regs approved. However, before we go to the Governor's Office and the Office of Policy and Management, we want to make sure that. We have industry buy-in, that we are flagging any issues before public comment, because we don't want to be surprised once we post these out. And especially, we don't want to post these out and then have our Real Estate Commission being like, these are terrible, we don't agree with any of these. So, you're, as you said, you're our first stop to start getting feedback.
So the legislation was adopted and will take effect in April, is it April 1st of 24?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
I think there, isn't there one, there's a smoke detector affidavit that starts in October though?
That was.
CTR announced something about that last week, so.
That was a different bill, so that had, that was modifying a bill that passed in 2022. That there was a lot of confusion about, and off the top of my head, I don't, I don't remember what that bill or public act was.
No, it is, so it is actually somewhat significant change to the bill, because previously, a seller, when they. When they went to closing, they would sign an affidavit that said they had working smoke and carbon monoxide detectors in the house. Or, they could pay a $250 credit to the buyer in lieu of signing the affidavit. And a lot of closing attorneys would recommend to sellers to not sign the affidavit, for fear of potential litigation after the fact if something were to happen. So. That has now, they've now taken away the $250 option, so sellers have to install smoke and CO detectors and then sign the affidavit for closing. And that starts October 1. Is DCP going to advertise about that and provide guidance, or is that just coming from CTR?
Coming from CTR, sorry, I'm just going to jump in, good to see everyone, Leslie O'Brien here. That is not, that was not part of, as Julianne already mentioned, and you know, it's not, that was not part of the bill that we are talking about or that we worked on, we weren't consulted with about this, and.
Yeah.
It's really not, it's not within our regulatory.
Okay.
Pervview to begin with, so. We weren't planning on notifying anyone, because it's really not within our scope.
Thank you.
Yep. As far reference, I did put the public act number in the chat, so it's 23-164. So. Oh, Chairman, you're on mute.
I think I muted everybody. Star six.
Rochelle, is it possible for you to unmute the chairman?
No, it's not giving me that option, Mr. Chairman, if you click on the window and hit, if you hit the spacebar, that might work too.
Control Shift M should work as well.
How about that?
There you go. Thank you Ben.
Boy, that would be a handy thing to have at home, wouldn't it? Be able to mute people.
I guess, you know, regarding the smoke, it just, I'm surprised that other states have taken, you know, fire marshals or whatever have gone in and actually inspected these. I'm not saying that's, that's also an inconvenience, but today almost all our properties are inspected. So by having somebody, whether it was an inspector, a qualified inspector, or a town official. I mean, I think it'd be safer to the public by doing that, I'm just a little surprised how they, they did this. That's my comment. Okay. So Julianne, the question I guess I had asked you is, when is kind of like the deadline prior to April, that we have to get all these changes? Or anyone has to make changes?
So the, what we're doing with the regs is really, we're making conforming changes to the statute. So the statute, what's wonderful is that it created a framework with a lot of detail. So, when we pass the statute, even though there are certain things that don't line up with the regs, the statute prevails. So that's the law we're going to be following. Now, what we want to do is make sure that there's not confusion in the marketplace by having regs that conflict, but. And the answer for timing is like, as soon as possible for clarity purposes, but there is not a deadline. So, you know, for example, with the real estate statutes, when we were working on them, or the proposals last year. We had a hard stop, like, our proposals need to be in the Governor's Office by the beginning of October. And so, like, if they weren't in by October 1st, our proposals, our agency proposals wouldn't move forward. Regulations can be submitted any given day. Again, that being said, I do want to encourage us to move these along, because it is a very lengthy process to get them approved. But. The, the answer is there is none, there is no deadline.
Julianne, we talked about this at last meeting. We had a situation regarding the broker's qualification, the 15 hours, 1500 hours. Can we clear this up?
Oh, sure, I, you know, apologize for that, so, the, so yes, the legislation in. That will be effective in April makes it very clear, it's 1500 and the two years, three years, three years.
And three years.
So, and that is going to be how we continue to operationalize it, it's 1500 and three years. You know, continuously going forward. So those.
We're in limbo. Because the language really hasn't been clarified in statute.
Until April 1st, it is not crystal clear. But based on ambiguity and the department's ability to operationalize the statute. And making sure that there's consistency, this is the, this is our interpretation pending April 1st, when the language is changed. And then, April 1st, it is crystal clear that it is an, it's 1500 and three years. So there should be no operational change for, and you know, again, apologize for the confusion that happened at the last meeting. But, this is, you know, again, the, so the 1500 and three year should not come to the board. Again, or sorry, the commission again, because this is something that was extensively discussed. Understand, in your interpretation, we've, we did send an email to the commissioner, it's a, sorry, to Commissioner Castengway. Or Chairman Castengway, about this, to clarify, a while ago, one of the things that I did not do is send it up to the entire. Commission, because I didn't want to create a public meeting where there was any, you know, discussion on this matter, so. I believe that's why he is raising it today with the whole group, and Leslie, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add?
Yes, I would like to say that I believe the opinion that you rendered after the fact. Should have been in our hands at the meeting in which we had to make a decision. This was not a surprise to the agency. The woman had put in an application back in March, and we were dealing with it months later. And I believe that we as a commission were put in an extremely bad situation, having to take the opinion. Of the person who was petitioning us, and then to see an opinion come in where you actually had to go back and get legislative intent. Put us as commissioners in a very, very bad spot, and I think that we need the support. Of the department much more than what we've been receiving recently. We've been left to hang by our fingernails on some very important decisions, and then after the fact, you get a clarification. I'm, I just would like to say that we do, as a commission, need experts when we're dealing with experts from the petitioner. That's.
Well, I just want to say, this kid going on in legislation, I have some comments and reference to that at the end of today. Okay, so I don't want to, I don't want to. Get away from the, what we're here for, so let's do that, and then, I know where you're going at. And I have some comments to make regarding that also, at the end of this meeting.
But I had to get that off my chest, I'm sorry Ben.
It's okay. I'm sorry.
Uh, no, so I. Leslie, I wouldn't know if you had something that you wanted to say right now, if you. Okay.
I understand that the chairman would like to put this off until after, but I feel like the comments that were just made need to be addressed now. I, Julianne, I will defer to you, although I will say that. The. We, I, we did the research, once this discussion was, no one told the commission they had to vote the way they did at this meeting, and I'll let Julianne say the rest, but I, and. I just, I understand your frustration, however. You know. The, the, the item could have been tabled, so that you could, could have consulted with your attorney, so, and Julianne, I will add, I'll let you respond beyond that.
It's one thing that I've discussed with the chairman in the past, is that unfortunately. In, not just with the Real Estate Commission, is that we have seen a real shift in the legal support that's provided to our boards and commissions. And, you know, it's just a reminder, the legal support comes from the Attorney General's Office, not from DCP. And so when there are these questions, unfortunately, what happens is that. The item does need to be tabled and then brought to the AG's office, because they, they do not attend board meetings. And. You know, there's, there's this kind of ad hoc assignment of attorneys to the boards based on what the particular issue is. So, you know, you are not the only board or commission that we have heard express frustrations about the lack of. Legal representation, that, not just in cases when they're, when hearings are coming before you. But also related to just policy issues, things where there's an interpretation question. And what your scope of authority is, things like that, that, you know. We, we hope that. With, there have been some new people over at the AG's office, hopefully that may change going forward, but. And we apologize for any confusion, and hopefully the lines over at the AG's office can be opened up a bit more in the years to come.
Well, since we're on anyhow, and the staff is accepting us to. To talk regarding this, the Attorney General's Office is shorthanded. We actually, our representative from the Attorney General's Office is not there any longer. So, we don't have anyone. At this point, so we, you know, we need to, but, again, it's just like Julianne says. And I want to tell you this, anytime and any point that we do need to make a decision. Then, we postpone it, we feel uncomfortable, cannot make this. Somebody else is on here, something. Okay, so, I think what she's saying, Julianne is saying, is the same thing I'm saying, is that. We're not getting any, don't rely on representation from DCP, I represent it from Attorney General's. Alright? And if it means being postponed, we table it and we postpone until next meeting. It's as simple as that. Also, I also want to say with DCP, it would be very nice, okay, which, a little bit we got blindsided. If anybody's going to be coming on to us requesting anything, and they're going to have legal representation. I feel we need to know that, that's when I will actually push to say to Attorney General's Office, we need somebody here. Otherwise, forget it, if we're going to, I'm not going to be doing this again, this is not going to happen again, unless we have somebody from the AG's Office. So.
We certainly respect that, and if we are aware that someone will be coming represented by counsel, we can certainly flag it for you, Chairman.
Give us a little time, because we'd appreciate that a lot. And that's exactly, that's what I have to say. Alright, Julianne, you can continue now, sorry, sorry.
So, no, not at all. So, big picture with the regs, what we tried to do is that currently, the regulations related to real estate and, like. It's been a pet peeve of mine, I don't know if it's ever bothered anyone else, but the real estate regs are in a number of different sections. So like, even if you're going online to look at them, you have to like, click through and like, figure out. Where you need to get the information that you're looking for, you can't just go in one section and then do a control find. And then, look up, you know, whether it's designated broker or escrow account, stuff like that, so. We're trying to consolidate them so that the information is more readily accessible, so. I'm going to share my screen so we can kind of go through these in real time, and you can see what we did. I want to, I'm making special note of that upfront, because you'll see that there are a bunch of sections that are repealed. And, this is because either that we're moving them to another section, and Ben did a fabulous job of putting in here a roadmap. So saying, you know, again, it's, it's not gone, here's where it was moved to. So this is kind of where, again, we're starting out, as explaining those things. Um, there are a number of definitions that are now in the, in the statute. And so when that's happening, we are referencing the statute. Um, and Ben and Ryan, I definitely, you know, hop in at any point if there are points or there are things that you would like to focus on or point out. Um, so yeah, technical changes with the, with the definition section. Um, the, so the forms have all been moved to one section further down. Um, again, the overarching, I think the overarching theme here is that we're trying to bring this in line with the statute. So hopefully none of these are revolutionary. Um, and, you know, if, but if you guys have any questions, let us know. This form is still the same, no changes there. This is all the agency. Same thing here, unrepresented persons form, still the same form.
Can I, can I ask you a question about the unrepresented person form? Whenever I fill that out, I always actually write the property address on there. Could we add a, a line that adds the property address too? That way you know what it's associated with in addition to like the person?
That, that probably would be a good suggest, whichever forms you use, whether it's, uh, CTRs or Greater Hartford Board.
Because, so for example, like I store my files by property address often. And, um, if somebody told me to go back, like if I had gone to an unrepresented seller, I might not remember their name five years from now, but I would know I went to their, if you told me the property address, I would have it. Um, that's, so it just is additional way to kind of file things. And if you put it on there, then it, it ties it to a, a, an additional way of tying it to a situation.
Where do, where do you get your forms, uh, Amy? You're going to Greater Hartford Board or do you CTR?
I use Greater Hartford Board, but I believe CTR uses the Greater Hartford Board form as the universal one. So I think they're the same.
It may be suggested for them to do so, because those are the forms we use.
Yeah.
And this is, is the-
But does this form come for, this is a state form, isn't it?
It's correct. Yeah. This is their form. But again, we can add, uh, I think there are some companies who do add to these forms, addresses and whatever. Well, you're right. Maybe you should get a blank of some sort with the address, it'd be easier.
Yeah, because I always handwrite in that, the address under where it says our firm, there's a little blank spot, so I put the address in there.
When you drop your folder, the forms go over this.
Oh yeah, I would have to check with my team. I don't have an opinion on the matter, um, at least at this point. So does, do any of the other commission members? Would this, would that be helpful? Would, is there an issue with that?
I don't have any issue with it.
So we will, we'll take note of that. Um, and see, the only, so I guess the only other thing is with this form, if we edit it, does anyone see any other concerns about other information that might be on there? Um, you know, usually if we touch a section, then like we just want to make sure that there's nothing else that want, that people want changed, but, um, because people will, so the other thing is that before, you know, this goes in, what we will do is unless there are major changes here, we're going to send you out the updated document. Um, then at that point, you know, again, flag any other issues, but then we will send it over to OPM and, and the Office of the Governor and they'll review it. Once we have signed off there, then it will go out for public comment. So, and you'll see it before it goes to OPM OTG, you'll see it again when it goes out for public comments. There'll be a number of chances to, you know, if you find something a month from now, it's okay.
We'll be seeing this after the comments, public comments?
Oh, well, yes, everyone will see it after the comments.
Okay.
Um, so I think that will, you'll, you'll get to see how we're responding to these. And there may be issues that come up during public comment that we need input from the commission on. So if there's a real policy flag or something where I feel like there are industry members that are saying, you know, we really think that it should go another way, then oftentimes like we're not unilaterally making these decisions. We'll ask our boards and commissions for input to say, you know, how, how should we respond to this? Um, so yeah, we got, when we put out the advertising regs a while ago, a year and a half ago, like a really long time ago at this point, um, we received major comments. We received substantive comments that then resulted in us actually withdrawing those regs. Because we realized that we had to, we had to do some substantive, substantive changes and then give people the opportunity to comment on them again through a public comment period. Now, at this point, since we changed the whole statute, those advertising regs are incorporated in here based on what we had talked about, you know, years ago, but, um, yeah, so anyway, we will, we will add the signature line, or not signature line, sorry, we will add the address line. Um, and Ben and Ryan, if you can kind of just keep a tally of what needs to be changed while we're going through this, then I'll be able to go through a little bit faster. So again, and five, we're adding the defined term, real estate licensee. So same thing here, real estate licensee, but at taking out a notice provision that's redundant in statute. Um, and-
Before we go any further, I just want to make sure that I've got the, the notes correct here. We're talking about adding an address line to Form Two. The unrepresented persons rights, and, okay, perfect.
And here, so taking out certain defined terms, things, the advertising is already in statute, steering winds up being defined later on when we're talking about steering. Um, so and no change, no major changes here. Uh, now the, this is just document retention. One of the things that the department has been moving towards in every, uh, every area of regulation is making sure that to the greatest extent possible, and so I can make this bigger. Um, the greatest extent possible documents are being stored electronically. Um, one of the things that we've found is that, you know, it's often hard. If we have a respondent, especially a respondent that is not so keen on us investigating them because of some egregious conduct, uh, they, we may say, you know, can you provide us a document? And then they're like, well, there's a box in the closet. Um, we'd like to avoid the box in the closet if we can. So, you know, because sometimes if the documents are available electronically, you know, we're saying that's how you should be providing it to us, not your backup of a backup that's not organized. So, um, that's basically the, this language, which was copied again from a lot of other uh, regulations and statutes that we have related to this. Um, let's get the comments in. So, and really, uh, eliminating duplicative language, which um, is already required in statute or prohibited in statute in this case. So then just referring to the, the statute that actually oversees it. Um, so in here for advertising, we have some of the changes that we had talked about doing, and I believe it was two years ago. Um, and this is just clarifying some of the defined terms in here, but also now here, how salespeople and associate brokers, because the associate brokers are, are new, um, what information they have to include in their advertisements. Just wanted to give you guys a moment to look that over. And some of these things, you know, previously you might, you didn't have an email address. Like there are times now where we understand that sometimes print advertisements are small. So it would be phone number or email address. Um, and making sure that people are not hiding who they, when I say hiding, I mean nine-point font on a print advertisement or like, you know, using, using different formatting to make it so disclosures aren't actually clear. Um, and then this here, so another thing that's new because our real estate advertising hadn't been updated in a very long time. Um, things like when you're posting on social media or through a text message, capturing how that information needs to appear and be disclosed. Um, the big thing is that those are forms of advertising. But you can only include a certain amount of information on a tweet or in a text. So, you know, we're not going to say you have to have your full address and, you know, all of that information, but, um, just gonna put down Ben. And so then prominently displaying on, uh, websites, not just having it on one page, but having it on, um, for each page of their website. But they have to have certain information about the salesperson and broker. And if anyone has any questions, please stop me at any time. Um, but a lot of this is seemingly redundant, but it's broken out by what's required of salespeople and what's required of brokers. So that's really, and again, salespeople and associate brokers get lumped into one category. The, the broker is the, you know, has different requirements. Um, and really it's just, they don't have to obviously include salespeople, salespeople have to include the broker. Um, and then we just put in, and this is partly related to the team's language, that if you're an individual, then an individual can't use business terms. So it is, you can't, I can't be Julianne Avalone Incorporated unless I actually have a business entity. So hopefully, hopefully none of these are revolutionary. Um, but down here, so this is just advertising changing language. Um, here for the net listing, we deleted this and just used what the defined term, so, sorry, the define, the term was defined up above, but then it was only used once in the document. So rather than making people search for it, we just moved it down here and now instead of saying up above, net listing means it just is entered into a, a listing contract. Um, so it's the same definition. We did not change that.
And, and if, if I may, um, I updated the, uh, descriptive title of the regulation. So if you're looking at the regulations and you want to find net listing, it'll still point you to the same regulation. Um, so I wanted to, to make sure that we preserved the nomenclature that's used in the markets.
Thank you. I think that is important because it's, one of the things is that people do look for what it has always been. So, um, down, then the deposit section is just defined terms. Um, and commissions and compensation. So this is what, and Ben, correct me if I'm wrong, the, I know we talked about this, this aligns with what was in the statute. Right? And we just-
That's, that's correct. As amended is the indicator that we use to, to say that's the section that will be in effect in April 2024, as we've been discussing.
And so they're already, they're authorized to do this. So this is not a new change for the regs.
Correct. It's just kind of a signpost to make it easy for someone who's, who's going through these. Um, as you've been talking about, uh, one of our main goals was, or one of our, our big goals was to make this easier to read. If it's easy to read, it's easy to comply, it's easy to enforce.
So down here, one of the, um, one of the things we did is, you know, mentioned earlier on, and this is where you had that roadmap at the beginning, is we repealed a bunch of sections that had, that didn't start with the twenty-three, twenty-eight. But we moved that information into this section and yet had to do a number of updates based on the new legislation. So for this, um, this is a hybrid of the new legislation and the old regs. Um, Ben, I don't, I know you spent a lot of time talking about this. Do you want to walk us through some of the continuing education? Or I can keep going?
Um, if there are any specific questions, I'm sorry, we were both talking. Go ahead.
No, I was just saying with DCP, Ben, I just meant not the chairman. So just-
Oh, yes, yes, yes. I, as, as I like to say, we came up for air too quickly because we got a case of the bends. Um, but, uh, yeah, no, if, if there are specific questions, I'm happy to answer those. Um, but, uh, it, it's been a, a while since I looked at this because this is one of the, the high priority items because we put so much time into, uh, making sure that the courses and the requirements were in the statute. Um, but if there's any specific questions, I'm happy to address those.
Ben, if you-
Otherwise-
I know one, I know one area that was of particular interest was the timing for the mandatory course and how those applications work. So maybe you can start talking through how that application process works.
And just for up here though, just to kind of go through this, this is, so that I think the key things for this pre-licensure is that the sixty classroom hours remains the same. This list of the subject matter is the same as what was in the regs before. So we did not change any of that. Um-
So nothing's been added or subtracted here?
In terms of the, in terms of the courses, no, this is the, um, and same thing with the real estate appraisal. Of course, as those were, it was still the thirty hours. It's still, it was again, the real estate appraisal description comes a little bit further down, but, um, yes, that's, that's the same as it currently is. Uh, so this is where Ryan was talking about. Um, I think actually kind of two of these related to the mandatory course. So this is the same as before, except for it says on subject matter voted on by the commission, I believe, previously it said approved, which I may, maybe it wasn't, I have to go back and kind of look at that language, but it was less clear.
Uh, correct. And part of what we were, is my mic on?
Yes.
Can people hear me? Okay. My, my little light's not turning on when I'm talking. Um, but yeah, uh, part of what went into this is that, uh, I had reviewed the most recent mandatory course. Um, and we wanted to make sure that going forward, that the regulation was clear and conformed with current practices and, uh, had adapted to the comments of the commission. Um, and so Julianne's highlighted the, the section there, uh, that I'm referring to. Um, but yeah, it's that it's approved by the, uh, board and it makes it a lot more clear, uh, legally speaking, between the statutory requirements and the legislative, or in the, the regulatory, uh, regime here.
And then, yes, and then if you also look down in subsection four, it goes through the application process. And then, yes. And then if you also look down in subsection four, it goes through the application process, which requires that it be submitted to the commission out later than four months prior to the next continuing education period. I know someone in the last meeting had raised a question about that timing. That's a timeframe that we thought was reasonable to allow the commission time to review it and commit it. But if there's concerns about that timing, obviously we'd be open to considering different time periods.
And the, the four months is the, the, the commission has the discretion to waive that deadline on a case by case basis in the way that we've written this up.
Can I ask you a couple of questions? This is Jay.
Yeah, Jay.
Um, but one thing on that, on that four months, it just could get tricky because depending on the timing, even if they submit it four months, it could be another month or two until the board actually meets. So you're just losing time between some middle and the actual board meeting. But regarding the course itself, it says one course are, I just want to clarify if they're still going to be able to approve more than one course to meet that mandatory requirement? Or if it's only going to be one approved course and that's it?
No, as, as it is under the current law, anyone can apply to have a course approved to satisfy the mandatory course requirement.
And if, tell me if I'm misunderstanding you, Ryan, but, but my reading of this is that that would be the situation under these proposed regulations as well?
Correct.
And so, and I think Jay, to address the timing concern, since we know that it'll be four months before the next continuing education period, you'll have sufficient time to be able to plan that meeting after, so like three months before, to make sure that you're getting all of those courses reviewed and approved. So hopefully that'll, that'll make things more predictable for the, for the commission. And this is still also the language from the old regs related to what the courses have to, what the courses can't include. So we just left that alone. If there was anything else that you guys saw fit to do. I loved the typing part, the typing in sales psychology, but I just, you know, and this was not a part of the regulations that I had particularly focused on in the past. And sometimes you, you know, you're reading these things and seeing all the time pieces. So over here, the acceptable courses, these are all the same. We did not touch these. So if there's anything else that you think, especially given the fact that it hasn't been updated in along the lists of subject matter. You know, these are broad topics. They seemed to still make sense, but I am also not a member of the industry, so we can certainly defer to you. And if anything, like I said, if anything comes up after this, like you're not, the, it doesn't need to be raised at this meeting. You can certainly let us know and we're happy to answer any questions. So so the equivalent experience also is taken from, let's see, I don't have to guess, taken from 20 dash 319 dash six. So and these are, so it's not new language, it's kind of being taken over and then I believe though, oh no, this is, I believe this is substantively the same. It's just referencing the updated statutes, correct?
But correct. The, the statutory and regulatory citations have been updated, but other than that, the substance is copy pasted.
And here we talked earlier on about the, for pre-licensure, what has to be taken, one of them is the appraisal course. So this is the language about the appraisal course that came from a different section before of the regulations. So still 30 hours, still has the same subject matter in it. Same thing, related courses, you're going to see all of this is underlined, all of it looks new, but it's not, it's just moved, which is why, you know, so important for us to have that, that roadmap on the side. And so from, in terms of the advertising, a lot of this came from the existing regs. But we did add in, so for number nine, we'll go down to here. That the advertising should not use approved by the commission. So we put in because.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think we were both about to say the same thing. But what we added was something that they can say instead that gets more or less the same idea along, but doesn't produce a misleading situation or doesn't, doesn't give the wrong idea that DCP is overstepping its regulatory authority.
Especially if there's a slide in that presentation that you may not agree with, but that you as a commissioner are not going through every slide, every pamphlet that they're going to send out. And so we don't want that liability resting with the department or the commission. So it's kind of a just insulates you from, sorry?
Go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Say it really, so it insulates the, our agencies from, from having that responsibility of approving every word of every graphic, you know, in any of these courses and then being liable for what these teachers are presenting, especially if it's really off base. Which shouldn't happen. And, you know, we have auditability, they, you know, send in certain material to us, but it's, yeah, it's not everything. We can't police everything or sorry, we can't approve everything rather in advance.
I think what's happened though recently is that I'll use a lender. It was advertising mandatory courses. Nothing was said. Then I, we looked it up. Obviously they weren't at a, a school. So they were using a board was certified to, to teach you that, but not, not disclosing that it was a school. I did call and made that change. But is there anything here that they must disclose?
All right. Just to understand, so it was a lender that was referring people to a school that was not approved?
Yeah. XYZ lender saying that all they, listen, come and have cocktails, by the way. And also you'll get your mandatory courses. So I had agents saying to me, wow, this, this particular mortgage company is, is also has a school. Well, it wasn't so. What it was, it was ABC board was actually doing the school part. You follow me?
Okay.
Disclose.
So that's the kind of thing that we would, you know, we'd love to hear about if there are courses being offered and promoted that are not actually authorized by the department or commission.
It's, it wasn't, it, it was proper, but it was not disclosed that it wasn't the mortgage company who was actually giving this class. It was the, it, it was the ward, a ward. There are several wards, I didn't know in the state. It was one of the wards. But
So as long as the, if the course, you know, if there's no issue with the course of the school, then I mean, certainly a third party can advertise to promote, but I think there does need to be certain clarity to make sure that, you know, it's not deceptive activity. I think that'd be something worth flagging for us to see, you know, if there's an issue there. You know, it sounds like they hopped on fixing it and providing the proper disclosures. So there was clarity for consumers, but we can, if you ever, you know, receive pushback on those things, or just so we know in general, because yours may not be the only complaint that we hear, it's good for us to be aware of those kinds of market trends. So we, we're constantly scanning the, the market to be able to see what, what is happening in terms of things that aren't necessarily fraudulent, but sometimes on the edge. And those things that rest in the gray area oftentimes are those areas where we want to put out consumer education materials. Because sometimes, sometimes players don't know. Sometimes they do, but you know, we will at least like to attempt education in the industry first, if there's again, things that rest in the gray area. You know, if it's egregious, then we, we can send Jill and Mimi after them, but we, we appreciate flags like that. As a section 17A, we just, it was moved from another section. Then down in records, we are emphasizing again, you have to have things produced electronically. And the burden of proof is on the licensee. And we, so what we don't have in here in terms of records related to continuing education is that they don't have to submit in their proof of continuing education was on a proactive basis. So what we will be doing as, as a department, and we're looking at doing kind of a coordinated review of compliance. And it's not just, you know, in real estate, but it's in all of these different industries. Like how are we making sure that some of the more technical violations, like failure to complete CE on time are being reviewed and monitored. But in those instances, we have authority to just ask for the information and they are obligated to provide it. So one of the things we want to get away from is, I'll pick on mobile home parks for a moment, is having, one of the things that they, you know, will do is submit in a copy of their lease template. And yet it's not an obligation of the department that, so these are proactively reviewed and then approved in format. It is just, they provide a copy to keep on file. But what we see is that if we ask someone to submit something in, then they're assuming it's all approved. And so we, and the, and you know, consumers rely on it. So what we don't want is someone to be submitting in a form that says, look, I did my continuing education. And then three of those credits are for a typing course or a sales psychology, kind of my other favorite. And so then the, the commission winds up saying later on, well, oh, look, you didn't actually complete your continuing education. They said, yeah, but we told you that two years ago. You accepted our typing and sales psychology courses, so we assume that it was fine. So again, we're going to be taking those in upon request, and this is a common thread that we are doing, you know, to be consistent in other areas as well. And what we, oh, for here for commission visits related to the schools, we want to make it clear that commission members can visit the schools observed, but also the department. So that, you know, we can send our investigators.
Julian, I got a question for you. Years ago, there were problems regarding where the classes should be held. We found that there were classes done at the, let me pick on the Marriott, let's say the Marriott. So meanwhile, we found that, you know, with the bars open and whatever, there, there were problems. People would go halftime and into the bar and never come back out. So is there anything we could reference to alcohol being served?
This, I will tell you that this has come up in the electrical universe because there was a, they had a witty name for it, but it was basically like brews and CDs. It was out of brewery. We heard the same concern from the electrical commission or electrical board. It was not put into law. We did not find a way to specifically prohibit that. I can look into it. It's been a while, but yes, the idea of drinking while learning has come up before and we can, we can certainly take another look.
What about the independent? Also, there was a, a problems where companies, real estate companies were having that, were at your school under the same building or same where, where their offices were. That was not
This is.
Not accepted now? That's the ABC Realty who lives at 123 Hartford Road. Has, has classes under the same, same rules. Is that, is that allowable?
Ben and Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe so. I believe that Keller Williams can offer a course in real estate like, or an escrow account or whatever that continuing education course is, but I'll go back and check with, I don't know if Ryan or Ben, you are aware of a prohibition onsite for this.
Unless Ben knows something specifically, I'd have to look into that to confirm.
This is, this is Jay. I, I don't know if it's in real estate, but in one of the areas I know that is explicitly written.
That is in electricians and plumbers.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to look into it, but I'm, I'm not recalling any, any such prohibition off the top of my head. I'm happy to look into it though.
So I mean, I would think if it is, again, if it's not prohibited, I'm going to, our team will look into it, that that's probably a common practice. As you know, I know, for example, like law firms that have to do continuing education will oftentimes put on, you might have like a partner that'll put on CE for the associates. And oftentimes they're getting credit for the time that they're putting into the presentation as well as the attendees getting credit for their attendance. So I think that may be a policy shift that we, if it is not currently prohibited, we, we may want to get some input, especially from, you know, to see how prevalent it may be at Berkshire Hathaway, Keller Williams, like the, the bigger, the bigger entities. But Jill, I see you have your hand raised.
Yeah. Yes. Earlier, up further up in your presentation, it does state that the classes for PMP could not be held at a real estate office. I know somebody mentioned that, not, not about the alcohol, but the classes being held at a real estate office. That is prohibited.
Okay. For PMP and not for, and so.
For CE, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is, that was clearly still defined. I mean, the alcohol is an issue because now, like Ben said, I, I actually was involved in that incident where the mortgage lender put out a big blurb on Facebook that, you know, get your CE and have, you know, and have wine or whatever it was. And several people called in and said, you're not supposed to have alcohol. What are they doing? But, and they also didn't name the school. And I'm like, well, that's not even an approved school. But then they connected to me and said, we're doing this through this board. They're going to teach the course. And I said, well, they have to be on your flyer then. You have to name the school. So they did change that. But the, the wineries and the breweries are getting very popular now. And they want to do CE there. So that might be something to look at, whether alcohol should be permitted or not.
So just going up to here, so Jill is correct. So the, for the pre-licensure, the first thing up here is that they can't be in a brokerage office. Now, that being said, this is on the premises of real estate brokerage office franchisee or appraiser. So if Berkshire Hathaway wants to hold this at Stony Creek Brewery. So if Berkshire Hathaway wants to hold this at Stony Creek Brewery, not on the premises. So yeah, and then we, so we will, you know, go back and, and I just verify what those requirements are, what the restrictions are. And so certainly we can, you know, put comments in the document when we're sending out the next draft. Um, but you'll see that that's notably absent from the beginning of the continuing education. So
And I don't think it needs, I, I mean, a lot of, a lot of companies do bring in some, a school to teach a course for their um, their licensees, which it's always been approved. You can have it for CE, just not for PMP, because that's influencing where they might go. But that's, I don't think there's any change there.
Yeah, by the way, I want to thank you for doing that, but I also uh, had somebody saying there were um, a teacher at a board was teaching at the PMP, and at the same time, they felt they were being recruited. I thought that wasn't allowed.
Do promote your own business at a, an initial licensure course? Is that what the?
Yeah. In other words, there was, it was a PMP class on it, and they, and instructor had their own real estate company, so obviously. They were teaching the course and um, soliciting the agent out of the class. That's
I'll go back and see if there's any language related to that.
When you had looked, I always thought that was not, you know, uh, allowed. Cause I know, uh, I'll use MCC for an example. I mean, they won't even allow, uh, they'll allow somebody coming to the class, individuals. Uh, but you know, you can't bring, you can't bring pizzas and whatever to us, it's that way. And they give them so many, so much time um, to talk, but not just one individual, but several individuals.
We can look into what the language actually states in the regulations. There's promotion of your business, I think. If that is to be addressed, it has to, you know, walk the line carefully. Because, you know, if I work for ABC Realty, then, and I'm the broker that's going to be providing these courses, or teaching these courses rather, then there is certain question of like, how much I can, how much I can speak about my own business, um, how much I can talk about my own experience. I'm sorry, hold on one moment. I have a child issue. Sorry, one second.
I can jump in, so we're not wasting any time. Uh, up through this point, um, oh, Julianne's back. I'll let her.
No, you're good. If you wanna, I'm sorry, I was doing a kid swap. Start, school doesn't start for us until tomorrow. So, um, Ryan, you were saying, I'll just scroll back down to where I was before.
Yeah, I was just, I was just offering to answer any questions that the commission may have while you were off. So I, I wasn't talking about anything particular. So, yeah, uh, yeah, we can certainly talk about uh, hearings and denial of course approval.
And cause that's it also.
Yeah.
But this is, this is a topic though, that I think we did want to just flag in general. Um, and yeah, Ryan, why don't you, you want to take this just procedurally?
Sure, yeah. So right now, um, if an applicant um, uh, is denied by the commission, the ability to teach a course, whether it's a traditional course or the mandatory course, they can request a hearing uh, within ten days. And then um, it goes through UAPA procedures. This isn't, uh, I don't believe legally required. It's a more of a service we're offering to kind of show due process. Uh, is this something that the commission feels strongly should be available? Or do we want to let your decision on approval or denial be the final word? And then simply direct them over to Superior Court um, for any appeals of those decisions?
This is really a policy call for the commission, so. Basically, do you, would you like to have them be able to take a second bite at the apple and come back to you? Uh, related to this approval or, or sorry, related to the denial?
If you want some con-
Held by the commission?
Yes. So it's really the question, question be, are you concerned that, would you want to make sure that they have a second chance to come back to you and say, I think you got it wrong? Or do you feel confident in your initial procedures that you're going to make the right decision? And you want the decision on their appeal to go to somebody, go to Superior Court? You know, again, that's a policy call. It require more time, more resources to continue to offer these appeals. But if you feel they're important, it's something that we're, you know, perfectly willing to do.
I guess that ten day, so it's, it, it's, is they still go longer than ten days? They could just ask for an extension or? Does the hearing?
No.
No?
No, if they don't, if they don't appeal.
Okay.
Yeah, if they, if they don't appeal within ten days, they've forfeited their right to appeal.
Any questions on that?
I don't know. Based on our last meeting, I think maybe we should consider having a hearing.
Well, this is, this is big reference to our hearing on denial of school or course approvals.
Right. So, and just so the commission's aware, so the process for approving a course isn't going to change. It's simply in the instance that a course is denied, that they would have a second consideration by the board, or the commission rather.
Why? Would they have to, they were denied by it for a reason? Would they have to come back to us for a modification of some sort or what?
No, this isn't, they modified their course and they want to reapply. This is, they think that the commission got it wrong and they want you to reconsider.
I get it.
And I just have a clarification on this. If we, if we agree to reconsider, does that prevent their appeal?
So this would be a necessary step. So if, if we do not change this language, the school cannot go to Superior Court until they go through this appeal process. So if we remove this requirement, once you made your final decision, they could go directly to Superior.
I see.
An added layer doesn't deprive them of anything.
Correct.
Well, I guess I, do we, do we, do we have any precedent to the fact that we have done this before, that we, that it has been denied? And then it's come back to us and we were in error somehow, and we should have approved them? I mean, I'm trying to figure out why we're gonna, we're gonna redo what we already did.
I think the biggest change is that previously, until we changed the statute, there was a lot of squishiness about what was submitted and what the review process was and how approvals or denials would work. We've added a lot of clarity there, and since now there are more bright line rules, it is more likely that a course might be denied because of the fact that we know exactly what those standards are. Now, that being said, this is Ryan mentioned before, they can reapply. They can be like, oh, now we get the rules. All right, here is our, you know, application that now complies with them. And I would expect that that's the path most would take. That being said, there may be some courses that come in that they don't comply, and the schools are adamant that they should, and they want to press the issue. Um, and so basically the question is, in that case, do they come to you or do they go to Superior Court? I think that's why the underlying, this is why we're bringing it to your attention is that the, the underlying framework has, you know, been, again, been modified really to clarify how the course approval works.
I mean, my feeling is if they've made modifications due, due to be, having been enlightened by the statutes that we cited, then they could come back. But if there's no change in them, in their delivery or presentation, then I don't see any reason they come back to us.
So then that would air in, on the side of going to, of eliminating this and then going to Superior Court? Cause again, they wanted to change it, then they just submitted a new application.
Exactly.
Anyone else have a opinion on the matter? All right. Well, we will take this back. Um, we're gonna do some cleanup of comments on the side, and then this is it. So that was, that was the end of the regs. That was our presentation. Now, we will again, like clean it up, send it out to you. And then unless we receive any feedback, let's say.
I have a request for the follow-up. Um, the side notes that you just presented, it, we did not receive those. It would be very helpful for us in reviewing to see those side notes prior to, prior to presentation.
But what I'll do is that I will send it in Word and in PDF. Sometimes with people have different versions of Word, because they were in there, but it might not have been obvious. Um, I like to put it in Word and PDF only because I want to make sure that, you know, you guys can see the comments, but also that if you wanted to take notes or whatever, you could put it in Word. But we will send it out with those comments on the side. Again, so it'll be in Word and PDF. And yes, we want you to have that roadmap. It's also something that, and we're probably going to be, we're figuring out a way to send that along when we send it to the different layers of approvers internally as well, so that they understand.
Yeah, I just checked what I received, and I can't see comments in my Word document either, so it'll have to be PDF, I guess.
It's funny, the first time I opened it, I did not see any comments of the roadmap, if you call it, but I did not see it. The second time I did it, it was up. I did see it.
Were you on a different computer with a different version of Word then?
Um, no.
Okay.
I have, I have, mine came across in PDF, by the way.
I will send it to all.
And I didn't have side notes.
Okay.
Well, because I'm
It doesn't show those side notes.
Yeah, I will, I'll send out the more recent, so if we can actually not send the old version around, if we'll, we'll put out the, the new version that has, again, some of the cleaned up comments, um, has the change to the form to add the address. Uh, and then we will uh, bracket out that end section related to the hearings. And then, yeah, so you'll have the most up to date. You know, we'll send it in Word and PDF, so you can definitely see those regardless of what version of Word you have.
Julian, you were supposed to also number the pages, and they never did.
Okay, we don't do that. That's Leslie's pet peeve. Usually I'm good about that. But so, um, I, we must have overlooked that.
Let's number, yeah, if we can number the pages, it'd be great. Also, I don't know if, if it's allowable is to date it and then as we change, revise? You know what I'm saying? It's just less complicated if there's some dates.
So once we put it into the system, it is, it is a specific format. There needs to be specific headers. It will not have a date on it. But once it gets into the ERIC system, you'll be able to track it all, like the documents will show up sequentially. You'll be able to see the modified versions. We lose a little bit of control in terms of modifying it anytime, but there's, and there are like twenty something, there are like twenty steps to the ERIC's process. So I'm not going to go through all of them right now, but at the same time, there are many points during this where the document comes back to us. So for example, like after OPM and OTG comes back to us, we can make changes. After public comment comes back to us, after the AG's office come back. So like, so that is where we will have different points of if there are changes along the way that you want to make, that we can look at them, but the further along it gets in the process, it gets much more difficult to do these changes. So really, the time to make comments is between now and the end of public comment, which is months away. So, you know, it is not, it's not next Thursday. It's not, you know, coming up very quickly. But um, yeah, we'd, we'd appreciate the feedback as soon as possible. And um, we'll try to turn this around and get the updated draft out to you guys this week. And
I have one more request. Um, I think, I, I think I, uh, I addressed it with you individually, uh, Julianne. But um, your language may not be our language. So what you, you're used to underlining and bold and, and, and your way of doing things. We don't know your language. So if you could identify what underlining is, what, what that means, what bold means, et cetera, that would be very helpful for us, because it's, it's, it could be mu, done with much more ease if we had some of these things addressed.
We agree with you. We love redlining here at the Department. It is much clearer. Um, the Legislative Commissioner's Office disagrees with us. And therefore, we comply with their requirements, um, because it's the only way that they will review our regs. So
We just need clarification, you know, whatever way you have to do it, just clarify it for us, if you would.
We absolutely will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that, I have nothing else unless you have additional questions that I can help with.
Well, thank you so much, Julian. They cleared up a lot of things. I think now we have a better feel of what's going on.
Well, thank you for your time. Again, this, I can't emphasize enough how amazing it was to have your support and insight to get the legislation over the finish line last session. It was huge. That was a really big bill and a lot of cleanup, a really comprehensive review. And I know it took a ton of your time. Um, so thank you. Thank you for the investment.
And thank you. Okay. Um, the last thing we had, I guess, for today was in reference to the new protected class. There's been questions about it. I've talked to a few attorneys. Um, and it is, and I'm not getting a, the, the same answer. So I've got to call the CHRO, and I will report back to you regarding that. Okay? Any, any other questions? Anything else? Any comments anybody want to make at this time? Well, thank you all again. All right, and I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.